Good evening and welcome to the Smyrna Town Council Workshop to set our agenda for our October meeting. Before we move into our items for discussion, I'm going to ask Steve Sullivan to do our prayer and Tim Morrell to do our pledge. If you'll stand with me, please.
Dear Lord, thank you for today. We ask that you be with the members of the town and the staff that's here today, be with the council, and everyone that's come to represent an item. We ask that you continue to bless this town as we conduct our business tonight and that everything that happens here tonight would be pleasing in your eyes. We ask that you continue to remember our first responders and our military and our great nation. In Jesus' name, we pray.
Would you face the flag?
With allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Steve. And Tim? We will move into our items for discussion. Our first item is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of properties located on Tax Map 54, parcels 51.00 and part of parcel 50.01. It's requested by Sean Collins to go from R3 to PRO. The property requested contains approximately 15.4 acres and are located on Rocky Fork, Ambleville Road, and this is a second reading. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is a PRD request for 20 single-family lots, 32 townhouse lots. The minimum square footage would be 1,600 square feet. The townhouse portion, which are labeled cottages on the plans, would be age restricted as well. This development will be served by CUD and the fire flow is not adequate at this time. There is an upgrade underway that will address that issue that's slated to be completed next spring. So, did include all the pattern book and everything that goes with this plan. Planning Commission did recommend approval. Nothing has changed on this since you looked at it on first reading.
Okay. Any questions for Kevin on this, since nothing has changed? Okay, seeing nothing, we'll move on to item two, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 35, parcel 94.00, requested by Sean Saunders to go from R1 to PID. The property requested to be rezoned contains approximately 3.4 acres and is located at 7085 Florence Road, and this is a second reading. Kevin?
Again, this is another PUD request, planned industrial development request. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R1, R3, and I2. This is a proposed development is for a self-storage facility totaling 50,980 square feet, three conventional self-storage buildings, and three buildings that would be covered parking for boats, RVs, et cetera. The exteriors of the buildings facing Florence Road, as well as any exterior lot lines, would be required to be brickstone or cement siding, and there would be a type D buffer on the both sides and the rear that do abut single-family residentially zoned properties. Again, nothing has changed on this since you looked at this on first reading.
Questions for Kevin on this?
Have you got any other calls other than the one you had?
I've not had any additional calls, no.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, we'll move on to item three, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 34G, Group A, parcel 27.00, requested by Michael Lee to go from C2 to R2. The property requested to be rezoned contains approximately 36 one-hundredths of an acre and is located at 203 Stewart Drive, and this is a second reading. Kevin?
Yeah, this is a piece of property that's in the middle of a residentially used area, but it's all, almost all completely zoned. C2 has been for many years. This is a vacant lot, and they are requesting the rezoning so they can be able to build a house there. There are a couple of the lots that have been rezoned back to residential in the last few years. The Planning Commission did review this, do recommend approval. Again, nothing has changed since you looked at this on first reading.
Questions for Kevin on this? Okay, we'll put that on the agenda and move on to item four, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 34, parcel 24.03, requested by Mike Bries to go from I3 to I1. The property requested to be rezoned contains approximately 98 one-hundredths of an acre and is located at 555 Wade Harrod Road, and this is a second reading. Kevin?
Yeah, again, this is, nothing has changed on this since first reading. This is a request just to rezone this parcel. Our surrounding zoning is a mix of I1 and I3. It was all I3 until recently, and we've had a few requests to be rezoned to I1 in the last few months, or six, eight months or so. The, it's about 1,200 feet west of the intersection with Sam Griffin Road. This is consistent with the planning plan for the area. At the first reading, I was asked to contact the applicant regarding potentially some additional screening and fencing and those kind of things from Lowry Street. I did talk to him, and he's certainly amenable to that. He has, he has a little bit of a, I guess, a little bit of a concern about having trees near fencing that could be climbed over and jumped into his lot. I think that was the only concern he really had, but he is certainly amenable to discuss additional screening and those kind of things between this property and the, and Lowry Street.
What's your recommendation of a compromise so that we get our screening and he?
Well, I think maybe if, he would have to, he was hoping to be able to utilize some existing fencing that's already on the property, which is on the property line. So, the alternative would be to him to set his fence back enough off of the, off of his property line to where his trees could be planted and you have enough room in between. I think that's really the only thing he can do. Or he could plant something like arbor vies or something there that are not easily climbed as well, I think. Anything through the options.
I do agree that there are options, especially for our concern with blocking that view, especially during the winter, so. Other comments? How do you all feel about that?
I think the suggestion of an arbor vie or a tight tree, or I'm not sure if it's tree or shrubbery, but certainly it grows high, stays green, and it's something that you really can't climb. So, I think that's a great idea.
Other questions or comments on that? Okay, we'll put that on the agenda and move on to item five, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the amendment of the text of the Smyrna Municipal Zoning Ordinance to amend Article 4, Section 4.030, Temporary Use Regulations, and this is a second reading. Kevin?
Yeah, this is a text amendment to the ordinance. This is regarding temporary retail, temporary use regulations and temporary retail and mobile food service vehicles. This is something that council has talked about several times, and we looked at surrounding communities and came up with this as our recommendation. Nothing has changed on any of this text since you looked at it on first reading.
Questions or comments that you want to make on this? I think we've been over it quite a bit.
Yeah, I think there's a change.
Oh, you didn't have a question?
Just forms? I know you said that there would be forms. Have you all started working on those or you're waiting to get?
Not yet, no.
Okay, just curious.
No, we have not cut to that yet. That is on my list to do.
Yes, sir. Anything else? Okay, we will put that on the agenda and move on to item six, consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation of C2 and PRO zoning for properties located on Tax Map 50, parcels 1.00, 2.00, and 4.00, containing approximately 252.6 acres. This is requested by Brett Smith on behalf of Encompass Land Group. The recommendation also includes the annexation of approximately 3,400 linear feet of the existing right-of-way of Rocky Fork Road. The properties are located along Rocky Fork Road, southwest of I-24, and this is a first reading. Kevin?
Yeah, this is the item that was deferred a month, and then we had our special work session last week. The applicants are here and are certainly ready to try and answer any other questions you have. They did some revised plans yesterday, and we did send those to you all yesterday afternoon. They have addressed one of the main concerns being the frontage road, and they have added that, and that is set aside now as a frontage road going from the north part of their property all the way to the south. They did make some other changes as well, and I think they can maybe speak to those specifics a lot better than I can. I don't want to try to do that, but, but they, again, they have, certainly have attempted to address some of the concerns that were raised the other day. And so, again, they are here and they have the ability to, they sent us a presentation as well, and this here, if you all need to see that.
Before we hear their presentation, Council, are there any remarks or questions that you have for Kevin?
Kevin, just real quick, I was noticing in the drawings, which we expected that they've kind of reworked some of their buildings. How does that affect the total number of units and density?
I think the total number of units has gone down from what they looked, were looking at before by 50 or so, I think, 50 or 60 total units overall. I think there's, well, there's still 510 on the condo side. I think that was, that was where some of the reduction certainly is. But I think it's 1,204 now, and I think they were looking at 1,262 before as a total.
Okay, thank you.
And this is roughly 61 acres, I believe, in commercial total.
Kevin, just curious, who would be taking care of the cemetery?
Okay. Which cemetery? I'm not, if there's a cemetery that's there, if it ends up being part of an open space or something like that, it would really be up to the HOA. They have to provide access, certainly.
Okay.
Any cemetery like that, we've had several of those in developments, and they, typically they are part of an open space, or we've had a couple that were actually included with a lot, so the lot owner has to maintain it.
Yeah, this looks like basically a sizable lot is what it kind of looks like, so I'm just...
Other questions for Kevin? Would you all like to hear from the developer? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Who's going to speak on behalf of you all?
I'll sit down. I think I'll sit down.
My name is Brett Smith. I'm a planner, landscaper, attorney, Reagan Smith Associates. I'll make it quick and just go over what's changed since you saw this Thursday. Let me show you this. This is what you had before. This is what we met on Thursday. And thought, after we sent the PowerPoint, you may want to see it. So, this is where we had the frontage road here. We actually showed you a what-if scenario on the commercial, which is what I'll point to. We talked about the depth here. We talked about making it all the way back to this frontage road, making this all the way through. Counsel McColl had that comment. We also kind of highlighted how this would go through here. So, we have taken these townhomes and put them here, and I'll show you that. The other, the other thing we've done in this scheme is we've actually started looking a little further into the storm, so our storm basin has gotten bigger on that southeast corner. We've done some more studies. We've looked at the geology of it. We've looked at the geotech, and we know that we're going to need more storm than we showed you before, too. So, we have lost units there also. So, this is, again, the what-if scenario just for what-if on that west side of Rocky Fork. That is a, these are prototypes that we've designed at our office. That is a neighborhood Walmart with a, with a gas pump out front. The next building to the south is a tractor supply with the large outdoor yard, and then the next building down is a CVS. Again, just showing you what could fit there, just showing you what-if scenarios. We have reduced the condos by 66 units. We did increase the townhomes. So, probably the biggest change, hey, I can use the cursor, not. So, probably the biggest change is, if you see the interior roundabout, can I walk up there or have to stay here?
Yeah, but Kevin, do you have the point, the?
Oh, wait, I got one. I brought one for this reason. I got a battery in it. So, the biggest change you'll see is, we used to have a road stub out here. We still have this one, we still have this one, but we need this for the storm, and we took the townhomes back into here. So, that used to be single-family. The overall is a net loss of units. The condos have reduced. The townhomes absorb that difference, and the, and the single-family has reduced. That's how we've lost or lowered the unit count. But we have started looking more thoroughly at this drainage basin, and we are needing this whole area for the economy of scale. And then that third connection to the south right there was eliminated to help get that detention. That's a very quick overview of what's changed. I know you all spent a lot of time on it. Don't want to take up any more time than what you want to ask.
Council questions?
I don't have any questions. I always want to thank you for the time you've taken to work with us and to meet with us and, and hear what we've got to say and the changes you made look like they're in line with what we were expecting, so I appreciate that effort.
Brian, you and I had a little bit of discussion about TDOT and the bridge, and, not that we didn't trust you all, but we just wanted to hear it straight from the horse's mouth. And Brian made a call to Steve Allen.
Right.
And will you kind of tell us a little bit about y'all's discussion?
Sure. First, Steve Allen, when I called him, I said, you know, we know we can't get a guarantee because we don't, this is years out from the standpoint of the, of the design, but he had been very complimentary of the, of the folks calling in and checking on this. He had seen this design, and he said that he did tell them to use the, the old cloverleaf because he felt like that would encompass the amount of land that TDOT would need at any given point. As we talked, he said there's a good possibility that that would not, of course, be the design, that they would move more towards that diverging diamond. So, as we, I sent him this rendering, and I talked to him about the sinkhole and the location of the, of the, the bridge, and he felt like right now, if they do put a interchange there, that the new bridge would be built directly next to the existing bridge, and that would give enough room for that diverging diamond to go in and be shy of that sinkhole. He said they definitely would want to move away, you know, be away from the sinkhole, but he felt like there was enough room. The one concern he had was on that very top building. If you could highlight just that top building there.
This one?
Yeah, that one there. He said if the diverging diamond came in, he felt like that there might be a little bit of land acquisition on the corner of that parking lot that would come into play. And I reminded him that this commercial property probably is 10 years out, so.
And, and to put a finer point on it, the, the diverging diamond geometry is actually closer here than what he has. And then, you know, the one we would love for them to do is the urban one right there in Lake McEwen. So, the diverging diamond is actually in between right here and there, but yes, sir, that's, it's a cartoon anyway, so.
But my point was, is he confirmed that, you know, he felt comfortable that TDOT could work their movement of that line of traffic and work around the sinkhole, looking at it from GIS on an overlay, on a quick look for us. So, I felt more comfortable that we were in alignment with what, what was being seen.
Questions for Brian or, I mean, Brian or the developers?
Mayor, I'm assuming everything's double-wide parking on this. I was not able to be at a meeting on Thursday, and I know that's getting into some deeper work here. We're just looking at the overview, but I'm assuming that's already been addressed or was addressed on Thursday. All the townhomes will have double-wide parking and that kind of thing? Or is that going to be space parking?
Good question. So, we will have visitor spaces, or we'll have parking spaces throughout on the site plan.
None of these are garage, though, are they? Or some?
The townhomes?
The townhome product, yeah.
They're all garage.
So, will they have double-wide parking?
Some of them do and some of them don't. The in ones do, and then some of them are alley-loaded, some of them are front-loaded, and I don't have those details here. I can have it for the, the reading. Again, we didn't discuss it in detail. We did have that last time, and I'll have that for you. We may have a, we have an 11 by 17 if you want to see it, but we have looked at the parking and are looking at how to have, to a point we had earlier at the Planning Commission.
I wasn't able to be there Thursday.
Yes, sir.
Probably would ask you that question.
So, is that something you could get to Kevin prior to so we could look at it?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. It's already been submitted in part of the, I just...
Our whole attempt is to try to keep parking in the driveway and off the street. Tomorrow would be great.
Any other questions or comments?
It was a joke. I'm not really expecting it tomorrow.
I didn't even hear that.
I said tomorrow would be great.
Oh, he thought, we thought you were ignoring it.
No, I'm, I'm actually, I'm a little...
We're just teasing you. We're teasing you.
I thought we had it. We have, we have, we have all these lot typicals that we showed the Planning Commission, and we didn't, since we didn't touch on it Thursday, I didn't want to go into it if you don't want to talk about it.
Just food for thought.
You knew I didn't have that image. This is just like how Thursday went, and I brought scalable plans if we needed to start.
If you do have that information, you can provide it to Kevin, and then Kevin can send it on to us.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, other questions for these gentlemen?
What are we going to look at? The area as a whole?
As soon as he sits down and Kevin comes back up.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Kevin, you ready? So, one of the things that Brian and I talked about was, I thought it would be important for us to look out past 24 on out to our urban growth boundary, and so Kevin's put some things together for us to be able to look at this area in its entirety. So, Kevin, I will let you have it at this point.
What, we have been working, as council's aware, certainly, we have been working with our neighbors in Rutherford and Williamson County to try and figure out a route between Rocky Fork and 24 and McEwen Drive and I-65. And so, this is a revision somewhat of something we had, had been working with them on based on those discussions. There's a couple of things on here, just to clarify. The area coming from 65 at McEwen that is in green, that is either built already or right away is purchased by Brentwood and/or Franklin, already in place, and they're moving towards construction. That comes to roughly Clovercroft, Pleasant Hill Road area, if you're familiar with that area at all. The area that's dashed in yellow or dashed in blue are kind of a couple of alternatives that we have come up with. Blue is kind of Nolansville's preferred alternative, which is much further south of their city, and they were trying to get as far away from their city as possible. It's not my preferred alternative because it's a lot further, therefore a lot more expensive. The yellow one is kind of the, the area that, where I would see being a little bit more constructive, the constructibility of it is quite a bit higher. The red lines that you can kind of see somewhat on there, that's our urban growth boundary. Actually, that's the city limit lines and the urban growth boundary both. But basically, the area, if I can use my, here, this whole area here, all the way around here is our urban growth boundary because we've annexed down Ambleville Road and down Rock Springs, so. So, all this area right now, for the most part, is in our urban growth boundary, not in our city limits, so. It essentially follows, not, again, the, the yellow dash line, which is my preferred route, essentially follows existing Rocky Fork. So, you get a little bit further south of where this project is and softens the curve at Lee and Seminary, and kind of goes across and down to, for, well, kind of north and west of Kedron Church area. Follows somewhat the existing Rocky Fork Road as you head west. You could also go south, trying to avoid, there's quite a bit of topography out there we're trying to avoid. I'm trying to go through there. Anyway, then it goes, once you kind of cross into Williamson County, getting close to York Road, you kind of head south and hit York and over towards, south of there somewhat to, to Nolansville Road, and then across over to, to Crowthers, so. And, or, I'm sorry, not Crowthers, Clovercroft, and then Clovercroft, more or less following Clovercroft till you get to where it's already planned coming from the west. So, again, that's very much a draft, obviously. There's been no engineering done on that at all. It's completely just us looking at, at GIS and topography and those types of things to kind of get a decent route to where we could make that connection. Again, the area in green is already planned or constructed. The rest of it, we are working with Rutherford County, Williamson County, and City of Nolansville on trying to figure out a route between the two, because basically, once it gets to that green area, that's, at that point, it's outside of Brentwood and/or Franklin's urban growth boundaries, and it becomes either unincorporated area or Nolansville from that point, so.
Mayor, Council, I want to add, I had a phone call end of last week with a council member, Alderman, from Nolansville, who's shown great interest in this, and he made the comment that he would like to get back with us. I told him to let me know when. I think they've had some changes in management in Nolansville recently, and he felt like there's a little more conformity to bring that, that road in through town versus pushing it south. They feel like from an economic development standpoint, there's greater value with it coming through the heart, so they, they're willing to discuss that, so.
Kevin, I guess first, can you, I don't know if you have a pointer, can you show me where, where Seminary Road and Lee Road is on that map?
Yeah, I'm sorry, this is a very big scale, so, right here, like I said, south, we're kind of softening that curve and kind of going across.
So, what is the green line right there by your mouse?
Oh, the green line, that's our, that's Smyrna's existing thoroughfare plan.
Oh, thoroughfare plan, not existing road?
That's not, no, that's not an existing road. I'm sorry, that's one I, I mean, we need to, we have some changes we need to make in our plans as well.
Even with that existing thoroughfare plan, though, that if we, where you've got it dipping down towards the creek there, if it went straight across there, we're still, that's still well past the Seminary Road interchange or intersection, right?
Yeah, like I said, that existing curve or the odd three-way intersection is down here.
Okay.
In this area here, so, yeah.
And keep in mind, the MPO has not approved this thoroughfare plan yet, but we're pushing for this. I think, actually, we have a meeting tomorrow to see what MPO is going to put on their plans. We're hoping to hear something in that meeting, at least a direction of what they think they're going to go.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, generally, it's, you know, it's obviously Tennessee topography, but it's generally straight. I guess that big, this looks like a pretty sharp curve right there in the Clovercroft area, but that's really their problem.
Well, if you think of it now, I think that's where there's kind of a mismatch of the road, too.
Yeah, that, yeah, because Clovercroft now comes, comes down and comes out south of McEwen on Wilson Pike, and I think they're going to try to bring it up and make a connect.
Yeah, it's going to come across, that green area there includes kind of the, like, the Clovercroft over, or, sorry, Wilson Pike over to Clovercroft, kind of, I say it's Pleasant Hill Road or something like that in there, right, right in that area. Actually, that right-of-way is already set aside. They just haven't, my understanding is there's a, Franklin and Brentwood have an interlocal agreement that basically when Franklin starts their part of it, that Brentwood's going to start within a year or something like that. There's some agreement there, so that there's, that construction happens at roughly the same time, again, to that point where that, that solid green line is. And I think my last discussion, I haven't talked, we haven't had a meeting recently because of COVID and other things, but talking with Franklin's representative through the TCC, I think that was, they were planning on that either in this budget year or the next budget year, so it's coming fairly soon on their end, their P7.
Brian or Kevin, I don't know who talked to Steve, but y'all want to talk a little bit about the, I'll call it a water feature that we spoke of in our last meeting, that the bridge is kind of, the current Rocky Fork Bridge is just north of that, and there was some conversation about whether or not it would move south or even be able to move south.
Yeah, that's what I was saying earlier, that my conversation with Steve Allen, we talked about that sinkhole and how it would play into what his, you know, thoughts were. And again, there's no guarantee, and he said, you know, we're, we're just talking in hypothetical, but right now, looking at what we're doing and what this project brings to the table and looking at long-term, he felt like that, the bridge, the new bridge, if they put an interchange in, would be built right next to the existing bridge, and it would stay north of that, that piece of property in question.
Yeah, so, based on that, they're not really straightening out Rocky Fork like we anticipated there.
There'd be some straightening, but not a complete realignment, yes.
Gotcha. Because that makes a big difference in how we develop that interchange and the property around it.
Kevin, where's the edge of our urban growth boundary?
On here.
Uh huh.
It's this red line right here.
Okay.
That's basically, we go all the way to the county line to the west and to south of 840 going south.
And as far as Williamson County, Nolansville, and Franklin, is there any property on this that's not designated and... is there any property on this that's not designated as within Nolansville or Franklin's urban growth boundaries?
There, there is part of it that is, yeah. Some of this area, kind of the westernmost part of that, that yellow, blue dash line there, some of that is out, I believe is outside of, certainly outside of Nolansville. Currently, and I believe it's outside the urban growth boundary as well.
Does our urban growth boundary in Nolansville's urban growth around here butt?
I'm sure we do at some locations because they, I think they've annexed all the way to the county line on Rock Springs. I mean, I think we do at some locations. I'm not 100% familiar with their, their plan, but I know we do in places, certainly. And we may some of that area as well, I'm sure.
But just, Williamson County has been involved in these conversations as well, not just the communities, just as Rutherford County has been involved. Because some of that's not in our territory yet. So.
I guess I'm just looking at, you know, how much buy-in each individual entity has.
So far, they've all shown great interest. They, they all want this road to, to happen.
At their staff level and I believe at their mayoral political level as well.
In the discussions that we've had with, with individuals at MPO, with the mayors and all, they've shown great interest. So.
It's really the last opportunity to get that thoroughfare between Franklin and, and Smyrna or Rutherford County as a whole outside of that 840 loop. And they, they see some benefit that there's a lot of traffic between just in, in general with Nissan that could come off of 24, 840 and 440 right now that has to, or, you know, you got people making like Steve that trip through there on that two-lane, no-shoulder road. It's not very safe. So. But that, if you come through there at 3:30, 4 o'clock in the afternoon, it's a highly traveled road.
Kevin, don't you feel like we'll know more tomorrow as the, as the projects all shake out through MPO?
We're supposed to get preliminary scoring. Yes, I think we'll know more tomorrow morning.
Yeah, so.
Can you send us a copy of that?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Well, and another thing Brian and I talked about was after we're done with this is us sitting back down and having another special called meeting to look at what Kevin was talking about with the nodes going here on out for any property that's going to develop here on out. So we're not having to do this consistently. And then that way, Planning Commission knows what the wishes of the council are and kind of knows what the vision is of what we're wanting to see out in and Springs Road West.
And we've said all along that, you know, as, as we annex on that eastern side, I guess, of the bridge of, you know, on, on the Rocky Fork side, that our intent has always been to just continue the overlay district through that, that connector road. So that's kind of what we've been, you know, that's been our guiding system as so far. So.
Well, and I think Mark and Tim both know and have made it clear to the Planning Commission that sticking with that overlay, especially on that eastern side, is something that we have to do to be able to keep commercial from 24 back towards town. So. Okay, anything else?
I just would, I appreciate the fact that you two have been talking about doing, having a comprehensive meeting so that we do have a better idea of what it is we're looking to develop on this side. I think that's, I think it's a necessary thing. So.
Well, I think it benefits all of us. And I think it benefits the developers as well, so they know exactly what we're looking for.
And from the planning perspective, for Tim and I, it really kind of helps us have a, a better guideline going forward because many times we don't know, you'll hear us say, hey, let's push this through to the council and see what they think. But sometimes we're taking a stab at it. We just don't know. So I think it's very beneficial to have that done on the front end where we can all plan better.
So whenever you all, planning and, and Brian are ready, if you can throw us out some dates, I want to make sure y'all have the information you all need to be able to move forward. So. Okay, anything else with this item? Kevin, once you get the information about parking and all, if you can forward that on to us.
I'll certainly do it.
Perfect. We'll move on to item seven, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute the grant from the Tennessee Highway Safety Office relative to the Police Department overtime and equipment. Chief?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor and Council, this is our annual grant that we get every year from the Tennessee Highway Safety Office. This year it's for $50,025. And it helps pay for overtime, for DUI saturation, traffic enforcement, and pays for a little bit of equipment such as traffic vests and, and traffic cones, things of that nature. And we're just asking that the council allow the mayor to sign the grant paperwork.
Questions on this? Okay, we'll move on to item eight, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Central Square for software maintenance for the electronic citations.
Yes, ma'am. Currently, our department uses a, a site, electronic citation device that is made by Brazos, which is a company out of Texas. Brazos is no longer going to support those devices. So we are in the, the process of transitioning to where all the officers will use the, not the laptops, but the, the pads that are in their vehicles. And those will be used as electronic citation devices. This is a budgeted item of a little over $23,000.
Questions for Chief on this?
And just so you know, like I, I hope I said it, Brazos is not going to support the other devices. So we have to make a transition.
Have electronic citations? I mean, I know we've been doing them for a little while now, but going okay?
Yes, I, I think so. I mean, I think it speeds up the amount of time that the officer's on the side of the road. Unfortunately, some officers like myself have fat thumbs. So there's occasional mistake. But no, I, I think it's a good program.
I know initially there was some hesitancy of just how would it be and all that. Anytime there's change.
Well, anytime there's technology, there's consternation. So anyway.
Well, good. I'm glad to hear that. Okay, we will move on to item nine, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a maintenance contract with Motorola for the town's radio system. Chief?
Yes, ma'am. This is our annual maintenance contract. This year it actually went down and I want to give the credit to all of our directors who actually looked through their radios and determined there were some radios that were not being used. And so it actually reduced the amount of our maintenance contract. It's a little over $56,000 a year.
Great. Questions for Chief on this?
I think we should all get one on the council so we could talk to the chief.
Trust me, I don't turn mine on when I go home.
Breaker, breaker, what now?
Can you leave a message?
Yes, sir, you may. Yes.
Any other questions for Chief?
Chief, this doesn't involve this, but when's the, the readers for the license plate, when's that going on?
It should be coming up very, very soon.
Thirty days, they should be.
Yes. We have, we have determined the locations of where they're going to go. I think a couple of issues that we had was getting a power source. So some of them are going to have to be solar operated. At the same time, we had to put in our own poles at, at a couple of locations. But just to show you the effectiveness of these, there is a motel over by Stonecrest who has these in place. And they alerted us two Sundays ago that a homicide suspect had checked into that hotel. At which point we were able to deploy officers over there and he tried to sneak out a back door. And he didn't go very far. So it's, it's a very, very effective tool. And we're looking forward to having it.
Block has ordered the equipment. Like I said, it's, we're just waiting on the equipment to come in and it's ready to be installed. So.
And that hotel partnered with us because we were having a few issues and they were great to work with us.
They were very good to work with. I mean, again, they, I think they got rid of some staff that weren't following the rules. At the same time, they, they immediately implemented, implemented this license plate reader. And they've been very good to work with. And so.
Well, and I bring that up because so many times citizens ask us, what are we doing to prevent crime in our cities? And, I mean, we're working with businesses within the community and I think they're a perfect example.
I, I agree. And I mean, I was, I was saving this for the end, but I mean, I can talk about it now. I know that you all have received the notifications just like I have. Then unfortunately, lately, recently, we've had a couple of shootings. I just want to reiterate again and reassure you all and especially our citizens that our officers are deployed to the high-traffic areas within this community. And again, we still try to hit the neighborhoods and things of that nature. But we try to concentrate on those areas where there are more people, such as I-24 and Sam Ridley, I-24 Amville, Lowry Street, places like that. Again, our detectives who are working some of these cases, especially one of the cases the other night where both victims are refusing to cooperate, our detectives are basically ignoring that. And they are actively seeking out the identity of the shooters in this case. Again, unfortunately, these people coming into our community and doing these things are not citizens of Smyrna. These are people from other outside municipalities. So again, I just want to reassure that we are working hard, at the same time, looking at the amount of calls that our department is answering. The assault reports have gone down, our robberies and, and aggravated assaults are maintaining almost the exact same level as last year at this time. But our calls for service have gone down by 3,000. So that, that's a significant number. And again, I want to reinforce and, and actually give accolades out to our citizens. Our number one call that we receive is suspicious vehicles, suspicious persons. And that means our citizens are doing their job in this and that they're seeing things in their neighborhood that they don't like or they don't recognize or whatever in their calls. But even that call is down by 500. So something that I continue to say all the time, and I'm going to continue to say it tonight, Smyrna is a great place to live, raise a family. And I still think that we are, especially in comparison to cities of our size, we are a very safe community. But again, I want to reassure everybody that our detectives and our officers are working hard to identify these people who are coming into our community and causing violence. And they are working with other agencies, including federal agencies. So.
Do you think the readers will help that when they come in?
Oh, I think so. I think so. I think some of these vehicles that are coming in and doing this may even be potentially already be stolen.
They stole them.
And so they would notify us.
Any other questions for Chief? Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 10, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Thomas and Hutton relative to the professional services for NEPA Design and CEI Services for the Florence Road Sidewalk Project.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I want to apologize for some misstatement in that agenda. And what this is, next month, we'll, we'll be bringing an agreement between the, most likely Thompson and Hutton for this project. But what this is at this time is approval of the RFQ process that we went through about a month and a half ago. We went out to RFQ for the Florence Road Sidewalk Project. We have 14 respondents. We selected the top three. They made a second smittle. And what we did was we actually ranked the, those top three as number one is Thompson and Hutton, followed by WSP and Kim and Horn. And what we're asking at this time is for approval of Thompson and Hutton to be ranked first. So I apologize for that misstatement on, on that agenda item that I talked with Ms. Diane. I can get that corrected before the council meeting.
Okay. Questions for Tom on this? Jeff, you good? Okay. Okay. Item 11, approval of the term, terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with SEC Engineering relative to the engineering services to evaluate drainage issues within the vicinity of the Rock Springs Road and I-24.
Yes, as you know, as you may have known for several years now, we've had some issues as far as when we have flash flood events occur. There's a couple of storm pipes that go under I-24 near the Sterling apartment complex. Now they've been built out and it kind of funnels down toward Rock Springs Road. Has a tendency to flood Rock Springs Road, goes to a couple of storm pipes that go under the road. What we're looking at doing is partnering with the SEC Engineering, provided a contract. They're going to be evaluating the drainage basin to make a determination on what we need to do to help keep Rock Springs Road from flooding in that area.
Questions for Tom on this?
New development out here, impact that any?
No, in fact, it, it wasn't, I went through the initial design with them and talked to the engineer. They are allowed, of course, to meet their pre-post-rain requirements for the amount of water they discharge. What we did in working with them was that they actually sent more water out in a different direction away from the area that floods in hopes that that would help the flooding situation in that area by decreasing the amount of water that they would be discharging in post-development. Unfortunately, it wasn't enough and we need to go a little bit further, just because the, the size of the drainage basin and two 30-inch pipes that go under I-24.
So that, that whole area, like on, I guess, the south side of Rock Springs Road right there, behind, like in the Living Springs area, behind those houses, that's all floodplain already.
Yes.
So we're getting outside of that floodplain at this point? Or are we just filling it up more than we want to? What are, what's, I mean, I, I'm trying to figure out what we're going to do different, right? That's always flooded. It's always going to flood. So what are we reworking and what's the expectations of what, what is it going to be like? I went out there with the last pretty big rainstorm we had. The road was closed right by the fire department for a few hours. And when I drove down there, I mean, to me, it looked like that area behind those houses was handling the flow, just like it normally does. So I, I'm just, I'm a little confused on what we're actually doing.
It's really the, the, like, the flooding of Rock Springs Road as the water comes down between, say, I-24 and the Sterling Development, the amount, the volume of water that comes down there, the amount of water, it cannot, the storm pipes going under Rock Springs Road are not large enough to handle it. So what we're doing, what we're looking at doing with this evaluation is determining what size pipes or box culverts need to be under Rock Springs Road to effectively get that water to go under the road rather than to fill up those drains and flood the road and.
That's going to dump it out into that area I'm talking about though, right? Basically.
Put it in the creek.
Yeah, the creek and that, that area around it, it's a floodplain.
Under Rock Springs.
Wow. Yeah. So, okay, I got you. So really, we're, really, yeah, so really we're looking at getting the water from the north side of Rock Springs Road to the south side.
Yes.
Not really getting it off, away from the regular flood area or the detention area that's already there. We're actually just trying to help it flow better.
Right.
Got you. Okay.
Because even the, this last rain incident, like you said, I was out there with Chief and, I mean, within an hour and a half after it quit raining, it's flowing.
Yeah.
It's so, we just need to get more of the water because of the, I think there's two 18-inch pipes now
Yes.
that we feel like we need more space to get the water over to the creek. So.
Got you. Yeah, when I drove through there, the road was still closed, but there was no water on the road.
Yeah.
And it was, it was actually still raining. So, yeah, but I, that's what I was thinking is it looked like it was handling it pretty well. I was, specifically, I'd gotten a text from somebody saying, you know, they were concerned. So I went out there to look and it really was about like it always is.
Yeah, but it's getting up close to the firehouse a couple of times. It's been, it's been in the middle of the, the parking lot right at the firehouse. So.
Especially those quick ones. Okay. Cool. Thanks.
Other questions? Okay, we will put that on the agenda. Item 12, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract amendment with TDOT relative to state route one from Jackson Street to Sam Davis Road.
Mayor and Council, this amendment is to Lowry Street Phase One original contract, which extends expiration date to June 30th, 2021. And that's due just in the delay in the federal funding that we've had for those two years. So just moving our contract out a year for construction.
Questions for Charles on this?
Do we have any better idea of when?
Wait for 14.
Okay. Two, two, two agenda items, two.
Two items, yes.
Okay.
Item 13 is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract amendment with TDOT relative to the weekly lane intersection at Swan Drive in Smyrna?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this amendment to the weekly lane Swan Drive intersection, this amendment is just pushing the expiration date out to December 2020 in order to complete the end of project forms on and get the last invoice and under contract.
Any questions on this?
The work's completed, right?
Yes, the work's been completed, but with many a TDOT, it's, it's much paperwork to close one out and there is to begin one. So it's just, they had to have an active contract to process the final invoice.
I was still hoping for mast arms.
Mast arms are theirs.
Well, not really. Mast poles.
Other questions? Okay, we will move on to item 14, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Sessions Paving Company relative to the construction of state route one from Jackson Street to Sam Davis Road project.
Right, Mayor and Council, this is your contract for the construction of Lowry Street Phase One from Jackson Street down to Sam Davis. It was bid July the 30th. We got TDOT bid concurrents September the 22nd. And this is 80/20 funding. And we are, they have approved the contract for approval. And we are, they have approved the contract for approval.
Questions? I was going to say, Steve, did I answer your question?
Can I answer my question?
Good. Okay. Item 15 is approval of terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Paul Microfiltration System Service relative to the water treatment plant filtration equipment maintenance.
Thank you. This is the technical support agreement for the Paul system. That is the microfiltration modules that treat the water at the water plant. This is an annual agreement and the cost is the same as it was last year.
Questions for Mike on this? Thank you. Item 16, consideration of the declaration of surplus items. Rex?
Looks like it's time to have another surplus sale. In your package, you have a list of surplus items that we would like to sell at auction. The list includes equipment that's been removed from service or no longer utilized and some seized vehicles. The auction will be advertised in the Murfreesboro Post on the website and Channel 3. All the surplus items will be sold through GovDeals, an online auction company, and we're scheduling that to start October the 20th if it gets approved. And we have some electronics, some vehicles, a Cushman truckster and a Ford tractor.
Questions for Rex on this? Okay. Item 17, consideration of resolution to reimburse expenses for a future debt issue.
Yes, Mayor and Council, this was, would be for potential bond issue for the Olive Branch Project. The bids come in today. Looks like we have one really good bid. And if the math works out okay on that, we may pull this from the council meeting because it was a little bit less than what we thought we might be able to pay cash for it. I'd like to have an opportunity to meet with Brian and Mike again, just to circle back with them and make sure.
Hope you didn't jinx us.
He didn't.
Good. Okay. That's great to hear, and I hope we are able to do that.
That's always good.
That is absolutely always good. Okay. Any questions for Rex on that? Item 18 is approval of terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with blank relative to the Olive Branch Sewer Expansion Project. Mike?
Yes, ma'am. So we had the bid opening this afternoon. Dempsey Dilling is now going through the numbers and taking a look and will be calling references and making a recommendation on which one of the bidders to go with. So it's in his hands right now and he'll get back with us and let us know.
Great. Questions for Mike on this?
We'll have, we'll be able, hopefully by council meeting, fill in the blanks here.
Oh, absolutely.
So just so you know, we didn't, it was like, what'd you come see me about 3 o'clock today?
Yes.
So we just got them, so.
Okay. Also, if, once you look at the numbers, if we end up pulling 17, we also just let us know that prior to.
We will. We will.
Item 19 is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Larry Tolbert relative to the title opinions and closing services for the Genie Lane Project. Jeff?
Yes, Mayor and Council. Just as stated within the title, this is, would be in agreement with Larry Tolbert, who does a lot of our closings and title opinion work for the six tracks that we know of at this time with six tracks for Genie Lane.
Any questions for Jeff on this? Item 20, approval of terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Brenda Walsh relative to the acquisition services for the Genie Lane Project. Jeff?
Likewise, same project. Ms. Walsh does a good job for us on acquisition services and has worked with TDOT for many, many years. And she will be, if you approve, will be working on these six tracks as well.
Questions for Jeff on this? Anything under other?
I do have one thing maybe fits under other. I wanted to mention, I received a certificate of appreciation for the town, to the town of Smyrna, signed by Bill Lee and Charlotte Anderson from the U.S. Census for 2020, designating that the state of Tennessee complete count commission in 2020 census, a Tennessee partnership team. They wanted to recognize the work we had done locally. I think Rutherford County is reporting somewhere in the mid 90 percentile right now of completed. So we've got a day or two left. Hopefully, we'll get some good numbers. But we did, we did receive, and Kevin, I'll let you have this put back in your department, so.
Okay. Anything else under other before we move to department heads?
No.
Hal, anything tonight?
Just real quick, good evening.
Good evening.
We started punching holes Monday. The rain caught us about noon, so we finished up the back nine today. We're doing the front nine tomorrow, executive Wednesday. But we start tomorrow with an airification rate. You can play 18 holes for $23 a weekday, 26 on weekends. And we'll be done back open with everything all sent and ready to go Friday.
HG, are you going out and taking us?
Hey, this is the best time to play because you get to pick your hole on the green. You get to pick which one you want to punch.
Like 500 holes.
Yeah, there's hundreds of them.
May work out for us.
Even you guys could par.
I know. He doesn't need to be on our team. Chief, anything else tonight?
Just beat you again.
Nothing else? Oh, Chief, sorry, I was talking, but Chief, anything for you tonight?
No, ma'am.
Chief in the back? You're good too? Okay.
Too many Chiefs.
Mike? Nope. Mike?
I just want to let the Mayor and Council know, I've met with Ryan and Rex about a grant, LPRF grant, through the state, and that cycle came around. They had held off since last spring, so if we apply for it, we got to have a letter from the, from the mayor stating that they'll match the fund. Since we didn't have time to put a resolution before the council, before it's turned in, we'll just do a letter, but a resolution would be coming back to you if we get past the pre-application stage on that.
Great. Questions for Mike? Great job the other day on the Zama. I can't remember, have we met since then? No. Okay. On the Zama Park opening, I thought y'all did a great job and the park looks wonderful. And I've had quite a few comments, so y'all did a nice job.
Appreciate that.
I went out and checked out the roundabout. Mayor Esther told me you guys had planted some shrubbery and trees and it looks really nice.
Yeah, they did a good job.
It looks really good.
We held off on that.
Perfect timing. The weather's breaking, the weather's changing to rain, so it's perfect timing to plant shrubs and trees, so perfect.
They were cleaning up when I was coming over here today.
Yeah, it looks really good.
Good deal. Thank you.
Did you find anything out about that one spot?
It's not on the plan, so I told them we were going to add a tree. There was a gap down there. Jimmy asked me the very same thing. We arrived this morning.
Is that as you're going into the?
As you're headed to Tractor Supply where the old road was, there's a gap.
Right, right there on the right as you're coming in from the other side. I noticed there was a gap too. I just thought it was by design. I guess it technically was.
It was. I was going to ask the landscape architect what that was, but sometimes for a road, they'll leave that out. But up towards the airport, you know, the airport asked us to leave that out and stop the trees where we did, but down there, it just looks funny. So we'll add a couple of trees in there and get that done. I thought maybe it was electrical box, but there was nothing there, so.
Just a gap.
Just a gap.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Robert?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. It's been a good while since I've been up here, but been busy with helping out with Brett, behind the scenes, doing a number of things, bringing the computer systems, keeping those up and going, day-to-day care and feeding, and moving everything. The big project most recently has been moving off of Microsoft Office over to the new platform, and that seems to have gone well. We, I think, have four more mailboxes to go with some employees that are actually service members and deployed. So we're working with those department heads and wrapping things up there.
Great. Questions for Robert? Thanks, Robert. Kevin?
I don't have anything.
Nothing? Charles?
Mayor and Council, just to give you a quick update on our projects out on Sam Ridley. We're finished with the utilities. What we're seeing now is the storm water going in on the Kroger side, and they're coming on up with that, and we're getting the road to subgrade. So we're moving along on that. Hopefully, right now, we're just trying to fight our deadline on asphalt season. Hopefully, we can get asphalt basin before the cutoff on that with TDOT. Eden Springs Road, we finished pavement markings today. Right now, just got to work on our traffic signal timing, getting that into the box. And we should be getting close, ready to go. Just if the signal work comes out tomorrow, we should be in good shape here in the next few days to get that open.
Okay.
And then hopefully on Lowry Street, that'll come within the next few months.
So I was trying to monitor some of the questions from Facebook, and so ones that we've had before, when will completion of Sam Ridley be?
October of 2021.
Okay.
Right now, we're at 31% completion.
And we will probably say that every meeting from now till October of 2021.
Until it gets closer to October of 2021, and then we may change.
That's right. Then we may change.
Then it'll go to September 2021.
That's right.
Positive.
That's right. And you just said Enan Springs to Rocky Fork Road complete should be maybe by the end of the week?
Hopefully, like I said, just got to get in our signal box and get that timing in for the new signal heads. But we had one wire that they're finishing up in the morning that got cut, and that seemed like every time you fix something, you break something. So we're just chasing down those. But we'll be substantially complete, and after that, we'll have some cleanup items and punch list items of things that to do. But hopefully, we can go ahead and get the road open.
And then Genie Lane Project from Cedar Grove to Wolverine?
Well, Potomac to Wolverine.
Yes, Potomac to Wolverine.
Right. That's what Jeff's seeing with the right-of-way acquisition now, and they're in that process of acquiring the right-of-way for the project.
And so?
Construction probably, I'm going to say construction 12 months out, start construction.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions that Charles can answer that y'all might have been asked about?
Well, just on the Genie Lane part, that the new development that's going in, they will be adding Genie Lane from Old Nashville Highway all the way up to the Motlow entrance. So that will be a frontage road that will tie in up there. So the grading plans have come through, and that road is in their plans.
Great.
Mayor, I want to point out, the reason I say 12 months on Genie Lane, on the Wolverine to Potomac, it's not just regular acquisition of land. We're not just dealing with some homeowners and stuff. There's some corporations, when you get down to the Wolverine side, those take generally a little longer because it's a pretty tough process to go through the corporate real estate and those kind of things. And it's a pretty, I don't want to say it's a massive undertaking, but it's a pretty good undertaking because we're going to be moving a detention pond, realigning the detention and putting the road in as a roundabout there. So it's, it's a little more detailed work than what we typically see, so I'd like to give us a little bit of room there.
Okay.
Genie Lane to, to Motlow.
Yes.
I mean, they're not just going to go in there and build that road, are they? I mean, it'll be as the property develops, correct?
They'll have, they have it graded out for the road, so they're more likely they'll get a lot of the road in there so they can market their sites. So that, they will put the road in.
But as far as us actually taking it as a town?
We'll have to see how their time goes, but right now, especially up near Motlow, that section, that's further out than the two points they're working at now. So we'll have to wait and see. But a lot of that, they will want to get those roads open so they can market their sites. And because like I said, planning commission will not approve them without the roads, you know, being in place. And hopefully, on Old Nashville Highway there across from Walgreens, that construction there begin shortly on that segment that the developer's doing and putting that traffic signal in, in additional lanes.
Other questions?
I think.
This is not really related to the Genie Lane traffic, but the church there at Genie Lane, at the end there where we're coming in, they had their last service Monday, or Sunday.
Right.
Yes. You have word on the redevelopment of that property?
I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Kevin, but they're bringing some preliminary plans in, aren't they?
Well, they've already had all their subdivision flats and all done. Of course, you got Chase Bank, it's opened, and then you got the hotels in the back. They've had a site plan a couple of months ago that they ended up withdrawing. I know there's some other things looking in those areas as well, so I'm assuming we're going to have some plans pretty soon on those.
They're working on it.
Did Riverlife move to Alamo Village Road, is that where?
I'm not sure.
Safari, right?
Safari, right. Right. Have they already built and under construction and ready to move in there?
I don't think they're built yet.
I don't think they've built a building.
Yeah, I don't know whether they're meeting.
I'm not sure they're planning on meeting.
I know Sunday was their last day.
Yep.
In the building.
Okay. Tom, anything? Chief, you said you're good. Rex?
August local option sales tax, we received $1,247,023. That gives us a year-to-date budget surplus of $503,583. That's a large budget number down because of the uncertainty with COVID coming in, so we're about $200,000 year-over-year in actual receipts. August state shared tax, we received $505,650. That gives us a $4,900 year-to-date budget surplus. Our department has been working a lot on securing grants. We received a $1.1 million governor's local government grant, and we've submitted to the state for $761,000 under the CARES Act. So we're trying to get all the money that we can get.
Has that process been tough? I know I've been getting some of the emails.
We're very optimistic that we'll get that.
Okay. Questions for Rex? Kathy?
Mayor and Council, I'm so excited to share that after, really, my entire tenure, the website redesign is launching on Thursday. That's been a huge undertaking. Want to thank Robert for shepherding that process. Brett in the booth has been a huge help as well, but we will experience five to 10 minutes of downtime where you won't be able to access the site at all. So it's the final content migration from the current site to the redesigned site. So about 11 o'clock in the morning on Thursday, completely down for five to 10 minutes. And throughout the day on Thursday, there may be some things that look awkward, you know, maybe a combination of the old, what's up there now and the redesigned site. Just wanted to make sure you all were aware of that, but that's a day of celebration. The new site is aesthetically so much more pleasing than the current site. It's more modern, of course, and it's very user-friendly as well, so incredibly excited about that. Do you all have any questions about that?
Questions for Kathy?
Kathy, is the voting still going on for the Freedom Program?
It is, yes. And somebody's going to talk about that, absolutely, but I'm glad that you brought that up. It is still, still happening through Friday, yes.
And I just want to say how much we appreciate the job Kathy does. I mean, having to work with every department, every time there's something with the police department or anything positive that's going on in the community. I know she puts in lots of hours that are not nine to five hours, and we appreciate the job that you do. And we appreciate you telling our story. That's what we've needed for a long time. We had great things coming out of the town of Smyrna, and the fact that you're able to tell those is important to us, so thanks. Okay. Ms. Diane?
The only thing I have is we've issued 47 business license as of today, so.
Used to be 25 was a lot. Now we're almost to 50.
And then I kept thinking, oh, if we could only get one a day, and now we, some, some months, it seems like we've doubled it, so.
Questions for Ms. Diane? Thanks, ma'am. Brian?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, I do have a couple of things I'd like to share. One, a sad note, since we met, I want to recognize the passing of Officer Ray Jones, a good friend of all of us, a great asset to our police department, and a thirty-one-year veteran, lost his battle to cancer. He is dearly missed, and I know his family would appreciate our prayers continuing as they mourn the loss as well. Also wanted to point out that our fire department had the honor of being asked to be the color guard at the Sheriff's Department for the nine-eleven remembrance. Chief, we appreciate you guys, again, taking care of that and representing us very well. Mayor, you mentioned this, but I would be remiss if I didn't, I just want to say accolades to the Parks Department, also to our engineering firm, staff, for working on Zama Park. That, that park, while we see it as just, you know, that small product land down there, and how it, it, you know, went from a building to a pretty park, it, it fits in with a lot of things we're doing in that downtown area, and it, it kind of is that first piece of the puzzle. You know, along with that, we've got the CSX pedestrian crosswalk that'll be coming. We just, tonight, you know, voted on, or will be voting on at our next meeting, the Phase One of Lowry Street revitalization, and it's hard not to see all the construction going on at the old Lane Cedar Mill. So I'm pretty excited about how this whole thing's going to come together, and each piece of this puzzle fits into what we're doing and what we're trying to do to revitalize downtown. So I just want to tell you again, Mike, your staff did a fantastic job, can't seem to this glass, oh, there he is. And, and we just really appreciate, you know, and that was an international event for us. You know, we actually had the Consulate General here, was very delightful to be with, and I think she is very excited to be here as well. And we actually broadcast and had people in Japan watching that opening while it was happening, so that was a lot of fun, a lot of, a lot of, a lot of energy around that project. Want to show some appreciation to our man back there in the corner at the golf course, he was being humble tonight. He was, as Rex talked about, some of the grants that we've done. Hal came to the table with a twenty thousand dollar grant for our golf department through some of the COVID stuff, and he worked with David and Sierra and got that grant submitted, and we actually were recipients of a twenty thousand dollar grant, and that check's already in the bank, so. I'm not sure what Rex, or Hal's doing with that money, I don't know if he's buying more soccer balls because I've, I've seen the advertisements for foot golf and stuff, but that was a nice win, and we appreciate Hal following that up. I want to say recognition to our five newest police officers, we had five of our police cadets that have completed their training now, and they'll be on the streets very soon. And Chief and I were talking just the other day, we're getting very close to getting up to a full complement with our police department, which is a great place for us to be, and also with the fire department. I think we've got three new that will be going to the academy here pretty soon, and we're getting close to a full complement with the fire department, so very excited to see that public safety piece of our town being recognized. I've got a couple of things, just real quick, that came over the, through the town website. One was a thank you from, gosh, let me see if I can find the guy, he just signed it as Robert, but wanted to thank us for the brush trucks and the work they've been doing. I did sit in this morning with the engineers and the public works on their staff meeting, and I heard a good report that said we were up to speed right now with our circulation of the brush trucks, we're running two trucks a day. They've made a complete circle, and they're now going back, so I know there's a few brush piles that I noticed that are now gone, and we appreciate that, and they're getting caught up. And we are actually hiring a couple of people, we assigned paperwork for two new employees over in that department. They've been a little shorthanded through the COVID with our hiring freeze, so hopefully, we'll get, get everything back up to speed and spiff, as, as our supervisor said, spiffing up the town a little bit. So appreciate those kind remarks from Robert on the website. The last one I have is also a thank you. Mr. Franklin Smith sent something in today through the, the town website and recognizing our, our gas department. They were out digging in his yard today, and he said he couldn't ask one to be more professional and courteous, and the work they were doing was exemplary, and we do appreciate. You know, sometimes, I, I've had a chance to talk to some of our folks the other day in the, the water sewer, street department, and, you know, folks, these guys sometimes go unseen, you don't think about them until something happens, until we have a leak, or we have, you know, something goes wrong, and these people out there working every day. But I just want to make sure that we're showing the appreciation, and we appreciate our two citizens stepping up and saying something kind to these departments, they work hard for us, so Mike, make sure those folks know that, we appreciate it.
Great.
That's all I've got, Mayor.
Any questions for Brian? Jeffrey Yell?
Yes, to say we had our first tasker meeting today, sixth of January, so it was kind of nice to be able to meet with folks, even though it was through, through the web. Also, I know that you've probably heard that the governor has issued another executive order, Order Number Sixty-three, and I just checked a moment ago to see if, if it's been released yet as far as the text to the document, and it's not been released by the governor's office just yet. But as it is, or when it is, I'll prepare a report and send to you to sum up any changes that there may be.
Questions for Jeff? Raquel?
First, I'd like to say I'm going to continue to keep the Jones family in prayer and in my thoughts. And secondly, congratulations, Hal, on the, the grant, that's, that's pretty awesome. And then welcome to the new officers and the new fire.
Personnel?
Personnel, I'm like, no, they're not firemen, fire personnel, welcome to, to the team. And also was able to attend the ribbon cutting for Zama Park, and I thought that was beautifully done. Thank you, Mike, to you and to your staff and to all of those other departments that participated in that ribbon cutting. And also, we also attended a separate ribbon cutting with Shabby Tashik, the mayor, and Jerry, and I were able to attend that, and there were quite a few people that came out and supported that, so I'm just encouraged by the, the love and the outpouring that the citizens here in the town show to our business owners and the participation that we get when, when things like that are going on, so just wanted to acknowledge that.
H G?
You know, I'll just stick with the old chestnuts and say shop local and be kind. Thank you, Mary Esther.
You're not sure what that frees me?
That's all, yes. I'm on the edge of my seat waiting to see what Tim's got to say.
There's no way I can follow that comment. I'm going to echo Raquel, who put it very eloquently tonight, and thank her, and, and she expressed so much of what I was thinking tonight, so thank you, Raquel. H G, I'm through, Mayor.
Jerry?
Well, I had the same, some same thing Raquel said as well, so I'll, I'll skip through those, most of those. But the Jones family, obviously, thoughts and prayers for them, and also the Robert Hayes family, that he passed away, and just thoughts for them as well. So I think you're probably going to talk about Rotary, is that correct?
I am, but if you want to talk about it, you are welcome to.
You, you go ahead, but I will, that's all I have, so thank you.
Steve?
The only thing I think is the Ray Jones family, Mr. Jones, Officer Jones, has been around for a long time. He was one of those guys that, we were in high school, we, we knew which part of town he'd be in when we wanted to drag race or do something we weren't supposed to. But Officer Jones, I had the luxury of beating him several times, so. He, he was always one of my favorites, we, we used to kind of joke with each other quite a bit through my dad and the towing business, so he's going to be missed. Since H G didn't say, or maybe he did, did you say be kind? Okay, I heard shop local and something about chestnuts, I didn't hear the be kind part, sorry.
Chestnuts came first.
I'm, I'm done.
The other two items are chestnuts.
Can't follow that up, I don't know what the chestnuts means, but go ahead.
You don't need to get out and break some bugs.
I think it's my turn.
I think it's your turn.
I have a, I have a lot I'd like to say this evening, and I'll try to keep this brief and short, but, you know, kind of tongue-in-cheek, when Steve just said he knew what side of town to be on when he wasn't supposed to be doing things. Well, some of you may know I was on the wrong part of that town this past week, and it's been one heck of a week for me, but not only for me, for my family and everybody else that I represent. I can attest to Smyrna being a good place to live in, Chief, which you said a while ago, and I still think I have a lot to give to this town. I got some people I need to thank, and a lot of you are in this room for reaching out to me and picking me up, making me feel like I still belong. I have a lot of families, my wife Connie, my kids, and I have a lot of families. My church family, my LifePoint family, Rex. I have a council family, I have a city family. And what a tough week this has been in my life, and I'm going to own it, I'll be better for it. It won't define who I am, I think most of anybody that knows me knows that's not who I am, and sometimes you make big mistakes, and I happened to make one this week. But sometimes mistakes turn out to be the biggest, biggest reveal you'll ever see in your life, and I'm looking forward to that. So I thank everybody in this room for your prayers and your thoughts for me and my family. I thank all of you that visited me and texted me and called me and emailed me, and I can't, I can't begin to tell you the love I felt. And I needed that. I needed that more than anybody knows. So. Let me change course here, please. I'd like to say something about Officer Jones and his family, and remember them, the Mullins family, the Butler family, Jerry Butler passed away, and Mr. Hayes, who's kind of a near neighbor of mine, Ms. Joan, our prayers and thoughts are with you, and believe me, I know the power of prayer, God's grace is beautiful, it's amazing. And I'm here to tell you I've accepted that widely, and thank you all. Thank, thank the town of Smyrna, and thank the citizens, and thank my family, and thank my church, and thank this council right here. Guys, I'll tell you what, you're in the public eye, and a lot of times, you have to take a little bit of salt with the pepper. And I've never served alongside a group of people that have my back and have loved on me and checked on me and taken care of me, and, you know, publicly, people watch us and see what we do, and they may agree or disagree with some of the decisions we make in this town. This is a thankless job for the most part, but I can honestly tell you guys that these six people and that group of people and these group of people out here are the best there is, and I got a family, my wife and my kids, that are the best they are. I've called some of you, I've told you how I felt, I feel ashamed a little bit and embarrassed, but this too shall pass. I'm going to be a bigger man, I'm going to be a better man, and thank you, Jesus, for allowing me to understand that. That's all I've got, Mayor.
Mark, we look forward to continuing to work with you and for what you'll continue to bring to our town, so we appreciate you. Couple things, housekeeping items. First, the Smyrna Public Library is hosting Halloween Bingo, an outdoor event on October the twenty-third from six to seven-thirty, costumes are encouraged. And then we have, don't forget to vote, a couple of people have talked a little bit about this. Don't forget to vote for the Freedom Playground project in the State Farm Neighborhood Assist Grant Program. Thank you to the Rotary Club of Smyrna for spearheading this effort. The project was selected as one of the top two-hundred finalists in the nation. The forty projects receiving the most votes will receive a twenty-five thousand dollar grant, so please take a moment to vote each day through October the second. I will tell you, it's really quick and easy, you just have to pop in your email and a password, and then each day you go, click a button, and it gives them ten votes. So if you could do that for us, that would be greatly appreciated because twenty-five thousand dollars to help towards this project is definitely needed.
Mayor, I want to point out real quick, we're standing at thirty-five right now, so we're right there on the bubble, so every vote counts.
Great.
So please vote.
Last thing I have before we're done, I see that he's actually watching our meeting tonight, Mayor Endo from Zama, Japan. I just wanted to tell him how much I have enjoyed working with him over the last twelve years. He will no longer be mayor in Zama any longer, but I know that we will see him again in Smyrna at some point. We definitely consider him part of our Smyrna family here and look forward to the time that we can see him again. So we wish him nothing but the best in whatever he chooses to move forward with for Mayor Endo and his family as well. Anything else from council? Nothing else, then we are adjourned.